Thank you.
Good evening. It is seven PM, seven oh four PM, and today is November twenty second. My name is Fred Chase, and I will call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. If you, if the councils would kindly join me in a tribute to our flag.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America.
The town council has not been made aware of the passing recently of any veterans in the town, but if you would kindly join me in commemoration by a moment of silence for all those veterans who have passed previously. Thank you. Thank you very much. The, I'll remind everyone that the meeting this evening is being recorded and aired live. First item is approval of minutes from the meeting of October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We unfortunately will not be able to approve those minutes this evening, just owing to the number of counselors who are absent this evening. Announcements from the president, I have none. There are no proclamations this evening, and we can move directly to citizen open forum. If there are any citizens who care to step forward, kindly identify yourself and please limit your remarks to three minutes or less.
Okay, I will. I'm Mary Lee Kenny Hunt, Austin Street, and I'm speaking to you tonight both as your town clerk and as Chair of the Board of Registars and Voters. Yesterday was the deadline for submission of nomination papers for the January seventh, two thousand and three election of the town council for eight town council positions and one ballot question. You'll be setting that warrant, I believe, tonight in a little bit. Nomination papers were received and are certified for the following candidates for the following positions. Town Council District One, Eric Moore. Town Council District Two is open with no candidate. Town Council District Three, Frederick Chase. Town Council at Large, this expiring April, two thousand and twenty-three, two positions. Susan Robinson and William Wood. Counselor at Large, expiring April, one position. Sean George. Counsel at Large, expiring two thousand and twenty-five, two positions with three candidates. Bradford McKinnon, Rigobert Noel, and Kevin Perry. So there are eight candidates, one contested race, one position with no declared candidate. That's what we have. So now, speaking as the Chair of your Board of Registars, I wanted you to know, since some of you will be among those who are running, the board is going to host two candidates forums on BTV, and it will be a time to allow all eight candidates to answer questions and present their positions to the Bridgewater public. The questions will be provided to the candidates ahead of time, and I believe there are five questions. We'll give those to you at least a week ahead of time. And then when it comes to the actual time of the forum, you'll draw a question out of the hat and answer that question. And so everybody might have a different question going around trying to give chance for everybody to do everything and not have it be so formulaic. There will be four candidates at each taping, and we will see to it that the three contested candidates are at the same, same forum. That seems like the reasonable thing to do. The forums will be hosted by TV, BTV, and taped here in the council chambers before a live audience and broadcast on Channel twenty-two, and a post-broadcast will be available on YouTube afterwards. The forums will be moderated by Peter Leneris and me as representatives of the Board of Registars and Voters. And also, one of us is on the Art Republican Town Committee, and one of us is on the Democratic Town Committee, so we'll be representing those two committees as well. The taping dates are set for the evenings of December fifth and seventh, with December twelfth being held as a backup in case we can't do those nights. So that's what I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public for citizen open forum, we will close that session of our proceedings. There are no appointments to be considered this evening. We do have one hearing, and that is with respect to the two thousand and twenty-three classification tax allocation adoption of the residential factor. And I know that we have with us the, the town's Chief Assessor, Shelley McCauley, and I will turn this portion of the presentation over to her.
Thank you. For the public hearing tonight, on the issue of adopting the tax levy percentages for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, I will present the information and the data relevant to making such a determination. The Board of Assessors have determined the assessed valuation for all taxable real and personal property extracting full and fair cash value as of January first, two thousand and twenty-two, as required by mass general laws. The information was submitted to the DOR and approved on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The assessed valuation breakdown is as follows. Class one residential is three billion, seven hundred and ninety-two million, sixty-three thousand, three ten. Class three, commercial, two hundred and seventy-seven million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three twenty. Class four, industrial, is one hundred and sixty-eight million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, two thirty. Class five, personal property, is one hundred and nineteen million, eight ninety-nine, ten. For a total taxable value on the town of four billion, three hundred and fifty-eight million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, eight seventy. Therefore, the residential percentage share of the tax levy at full and fair cash value is eighty-seven point zero one. And the commercial, industrial, and personal property presented it, percentage share of the tax levy at full and care, fair cash value was twelve point nine nine. Calculating and setting the tax rate is a component of a larger process we call the recapulation process. A municipality's entire budget plan for the fiscal year is laid out on the recap sheet. It lists all appropriate appropriations made by the legislative body since the previous year's tax rate was set. Anticipated and actual sources of revenue other than property taxes such as state aid and estimated local receipts are also identified. The difference between the appropriations and revenue from these sources must be raised through property taxes. This difference is called the tax levy. Total amount to be raised in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three is ninety-three million, eight hundred and three thousand, one forty-five. Estimated receipts and other revenue sources equals thirty-seven million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, eight forty-nine. So therefore, the estimated tax levy for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, which is the revenue a community can raise through real and personal property taxes, is fifty-five million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two ninety-six rounded. The levy limit, the maximum a community can levy in a given year, is equal to the prior year's levy limit plus amended new growth, the annual two and a half increase, regular new growth, and overrides. The levy limit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two was forty-nine million, ninety-two thousand, nine eighty-seven, with amended new growth of four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Two and a half percent was one million, two twenty-seven, four forty-eight, and new growth this year was one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, nine ninety-six. Therefore, the estimated levy limit for fiscal year twenty-three is fifty-one million, six oh six, three sixty. That is an increase of two million, five thirteen, thirty-three from last year's levy limit. To calculate the two thousand and twenty-three maximum allowable levy, you take the levy limit of fifty-one million, six oh six, three sixty, add the debt exclusion of four million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, three seventy-six, for your total maximum allowable levy of fifty-five million, nine sixty-one, seven thirty-six. The difference between the maximum allowable levy of the fifty-five million, nine sixty-one, seven thirty-six, and the tax levy of fifty-five million, nine fifty-seven, two ninety-six is the excess levy capacity. The excess levy capacity for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three is estimated at four thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, eighty-seven cents. So now, the town council must decide the percentages of the tax levy each class of real property and personal property will be at this year. To do so, a resident, a residential factor is adopted. The residential factor governs the percent of the tax levy paid by each class. The adopted factor cannot be less than a minimal residential factor calculated by the DOR. The MRF for this year is ninety-two point five, three seven three percent. If a factor of one is adopted, the tax rate would be the same for all classes. This rate is determined by dividing the tax levy by the total value of all taxable property in Bridgewater and multiplying that result by a hun, by a thousand. Estimated fiscal year twenty-three tax levy is fifty-fifth, fifty-five million, nine fifty-seven, two ninety-six divided by the fat, value of the town at four billion, three fifty-eight, oh forty-four, eight seventy, which equals point zero one, two eight four, multiplied by a thousand, and the estimated tax rate is twelve eighty-four. I have included in the handout different what-if scenarios, which shows the residential factor of one through ninety-two point five, three seven, and the prospect, perspective share percentage levy amounts and estimated tax rates. Please note, the tax levy remains the same. Shifting the tax burden from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, personal property classes does not increase the amount of money that will be raised through property taxes. Also this year, the average single-family assessed value for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three is five twenty-one, five twenty-four, up from four fifty-seven, five eighty-one in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, which is an increase of thirteen point nine seven percent. Average commercial valuation, not specifically included in another class for this fiscal year, is eight forty-seven, five forty-five, up from seven thirty-eight, two fifty-seven, which is an increase of fourteen point eight percent. If the town council adopts a resume of fact, residential factor of one, the estimated average single tax bill would be six thousand, six hundred and ninety-six, which is an increase of a hundred and forty-three dollars from fiscal year two thousand and two, which was six thousand, five fifty-three. The average commercial bill would be ten thousand, eight eighty-three, which is an increase of three hundred and eleven dollars from fiscal year twenty-two of ten thousand, five seventy-two. Historically, the town of Bridgewater has always maintained a ta, a single tax rate.
Well, thank you, Ms. McCauley. We'll open the public hearing first by asking if there are any general questions from the public with respect to this matter. And seeing none, is any member of the public here to speak in favor of this matter? And once again, I see none. Any member of the public who is here to speak in opposition to this question? None? And I would move then to questions from the counselors. Are there any questions from members of the town council? Yes, counselor Wood?
Thank you. As always, thank you for the presentation. Excellent level of detail. Hopefully, this detail gets up, up on the web so other people can see it. These are not surprise questions for Shelley. We talked about a lot of this in the committee meeting beforehand, but I want to ask here so that for the benefit of the other counselors and anyone who might be watching. So with regard to the commercial and residential split, you described the residential percentage as eighty-seven percent and the commercial side as thirteen percent, which for years and years and years, that's been the percentage split as far as I can recall. So I think you're looking at properties. I'll get to a question in a second. I think you're looking at a lot of new properties on Elm Street, a lot of new residential properties like at the Claremont, and potential new projects elsewhere. So the question on the downtown where it's a mixed use and something like the building that's going on Summer Street, how do you create that split between residential and commercial where there are five apartments above and a, and a, and a restaurant down below?
It's a mixed use, so each, each class bears whatever, whatever assessed value is.
So based pretty much on square footage?
So whatever is more of, will get more of the burden.
Okay, all right, great. If you, if we look at page twelve, or twenty, twenty, I'm not sure which it is, it's Appendix B. It shows some of our neighboring communities. And when we look at our partner Rainham, they have seventy-six and twenty-three splits, so they actually adopted a shift of last year of one point two six. In your opinion, is there any benefit for Bridgewater doing any other split other than one?
What's the question?
So other towns like Rainham, who has seventy-six percent residential and, no, sorry, yeah, seventy-six percent residential, seventy-seven percent, and twenty-three percent commercial, which is much higher than Bridgewater, adopted a rate where a commercial pays a higher rate than residential. Is there any benefit to Bridgewater in changing residential rate from anything other than one, which is what you and the committee have recommended here?
It would be beneficial to the residential class because the ship would, the burden would shift.
But as you said in your presentation, the amount of taxes would not increase.
No, the taxes remain the same. So if we were to do a max shift, and the average tax pay would save approximately five hundred dollars, and the average commercial property would pay five thousand for, almost five thousand, five hundred dollars more.
Right, so we'd be hurting business in that case.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. I think I'm also, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one question if I could, Shelley, is you had mentioned that the, the average increase to a tax pay would be about a hundred and forty-three dollars. And fiscal twenty-three, the average, so is it?
Hundred and forty-three.
Yeah, hundred and forty-three dollars. So is it, so obviously, some taxpayers will be much higher than that, and some will be much lower than that. Is it, is, is there any possible that someone's might go down? Is that a possibility or probably not?
Maybe if they chose to host them.
So the, the one forty-three, some people might see a seventy-dollar increase, and some might see a three hundred dollar increase. And what variables would factor into, into, like, not everybody's going up the same percentage, like, the value, this assessed value?
Yeah, just the assessed value in itself.
And was this a reval year, or is it still?
Every year is a reval year.
It used to be every three years, now it's done like every?
Now it's every five years.
Five years.
Next year's a reval year, but every year we do it with an interim adjustment.
Okay. So the average tax bill will be going up one forty-three, average.
Thank you, Counselor. Other questions from the counselors? Yes, Counselor Moore?
Thank you. So building on Counselor Woods' question, for a town like Rainham, they can shift some of that burden to commercial because they have a big commercial base. We don't currently have a big commercial base in Bridgewater, so like you said, we would shift it disproportionately to that, that commercial base. But if, I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. If we were able to attract more commercial to Bridgewater and build that commercial base, it becomes easier to potentially do a shift like that because there's more businesses that could, could, that you could spread that, that burden across. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions from the councils?
If I could just add one thing?
Yes.
I think, I think one of the things, I think most of the counselors understand this, but, but for public benefit, from a policy perspective, one of the factors that drives our ability, to the extent we have an ability to attract business to Bridgewater, is to highlight the fact that we have a single tax rate, and our single tax rate is substantially less than our competing towns. So for instance, Rainham, West Bridgewater, Brockton, all have, have a split rate that taxes businesses significantly higher. That's a fine decision for them to make because they've got that business, business environment, business community to be able to absorb those additional taxes and take a bit of a burden off of the residential. In Bridgewater, if we had a split, we'd be taking a little bit of a burden off, off of the residential, and we'd be heaping a lot of burden, as Shelley said, on the, the commercial, to the point where we think that would be a disincentive for, to, for businesses to come to Bridgewater. So, so from a policy perspective, we try to maintain a fair and equitable rate, which we think is a factor of one. And that's mostly to make sure that, that, you know, we know we're going to have residential development. There's not a lot we can do to control residential development. If somebody buys a piece of property with the expectation they're going to build a house, then there's not a whole lot we can do about that. So, so in order to chase, keep up, I should say, in order to keep up with that, that residential growth, we want to make sure we're doing as much as we can to maintain the same level of growth on the, on the commercial industrial side with, with quality commercial industrial development. So that's where our focus is. The tax rate is just one piece of, of trying to maintain an, an attractive environment for commercial development in Bridgewater. And I also, I'm sorry, I also want, wanted to thank Scott Rubin, Ron Baron, and Buddy Morris, who are on our Board of Assessors. They, they have a very technical role to play that often goes unsung, but I didn't want to let the hearing go without recognizing their hard work and their commitment to Bridgewater throughout this process and the other processes they go through during the year.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Are there further questions from the counselors, comments? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we could have a vote, please, a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you. The public meeting has been closed, public hearing, I should say. I would, with respect to the order before us, order FY twenty-three dash zero twenty-seven, FY two thousand and twenty-three classification tax allocation, I would entertain a motion for approval. I will note that the Finance Committee had voted six to nothing to recommend approval. And if I could ask Counselor Wood about the vote tonight before the Budget and Finance Committee?
I'll answer for the Chair, Mr. Gallagher, but it was two, nothing in favor of the, of the recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you both. I appreciate that. I would entertain a, a motion for approval.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Did you get a second on that?
I'm sorry, I did not ask for a second of that vote.
Yeah, we need to see.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? No? If we could have a voice vote in favor of approval, say, all members say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. I thank you very much. License transactions, we have none this evening, nor presentations. We can move directly to the town manager's report, and the town manager has favored us with a discussion about the fire station status. Mr. Dutton, if you would.
I've probably favored you with letting you know that I don't have anything new to report. So all is on according to plan, and I will have probably a more thorough update for you at your December meeting.
Very good. I thank you. We have no discussion scheduled. Any further committee reports the counselors care to make us aware of? Yes, Counselor Souza?
Some time ago, there's an ordinance been sent to the Rules and Procedures Committee on the Bottleville. And I liked, and the committee at that time met, discussed it, passed an amendment to it, and I would like that to be brought back here at our very next meeting to be resolved.
I'm sorry, Counsel, that was a discussion about what matter?
The Bottleville, the, the?
Yep, yep.
The nip.
Okay.
The little nip.
All right, very good. We can, we can look into that and have that returned.
That's in the very next meeting.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that. So was there already a vote to send it back to the council, or is there?
No, sir.
So you're looking to put then, on the next agenda?
It's been there for months and months and months, just sitting there.
Yeah, so the council has to vote to bring it back. So in order to do that, you would have to place on the next agenda for open meeting purposes in order for which the council will do a first reading and then a second to bring the actual order out of committee. So that's the process by which that has to be followed.
When I had another one in there, and you said the person who submitted it?
It has to be voted from?
Can request it to be brought back.
Correct.
And it was brought back without a vote and anything else. It was brought back.
No, that, that's, that's not how that works. Well, then. So the way that it works is the, it has to be an order. The order has to be a vote of the entire council to pull it out of committee. It, otherwise, it stays in committee unless the committee as a whole votes by majority to have it come back to the council. So the council has to vote to pull it out of committee. So there has to be the proper procedures followed for the council to do that. So it would have to be a vote of the council to pull it out of committee if that's what the council wishes to do. You can certainly bring it forward as the sponsor, saying, this is what I'm seeking from the council, but the council would have to vote to pull it out of committee.
So could a motion be made this evening to bring it back?
No, because we didn't have anything on the agenda for it. If it was, as, if it was an item on the agenda for open meeting purposes, it would have been fine as the first. So you just have to get it on the agenda. That's all.
Thank you very much. Legislation for action, we have none, nor old business. We have new business to attend to this evening. First item is order FY twenty-three dash zero three three, acceptance of elderly services grant. And if I could ask for comment from the town manager?
Mr. President, this is a very exciting grant for elder services. This is one grant out of hopefully a two-grant process, but it gets us money to seed a creative transportation, essentially a last-mile transportation service, and, and open to eld, elders, obviously, seniors, and also certain Bridgewater State students who qualify and other residents who qualify. So it's not targeted to one very specific group. It's actually a broad, broad grant. And so I look forward to having the council accept it, but right now, I think I'd ask the council to send it to Budget and Finance and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I would entertain a motion for referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a vote, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Order FY twenty-three dash zero three four, transfer order, employee past year retro longevity. And Mr. Dutton, if you would kindly?
Thank you, Mr. President. This order corrects an error that the town had made with two employees over the last several years by neglecting to fund longevity pay for those two according to the provisions of our personnel policy. So I, this one, I would also encourage sending to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I would entertain a motion for referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
Moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. Order FY twenty-three dash zero three five, Bridgewater Public Library Staff Association Bargaining Contract Ratification. And Mr. Dutton, if you would please comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had a fruitful negotiation with the Bridgewater Public Library staff and have come up with an MOU that will be incorporated into a full contract, assuming the council passes the principles and provisions. Mostly, I can tell you, mostly, this is a lot of cleanup work. We have an old contract that predates the change in government that was being just sort of recycled every three years. So we've decided that we really want to clean that up. Bridgewater Public Library staff was the only collective bargaining group that was not on our wage scale. So we decided to try to make an effort to get them on the wage scale. They agreed to that. And really, that is the most pertinent part. There was a slight bump in longevity. But essentially, it gets all the staff over there on a twelve-step schedule on whichever grade they fall on, which has been negotiated and you can see in the contract. But it gets them in line with the entire rest of the town. So again, I would encourage you to forward this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I would entertain a motion for referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. So moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? And seeing none, if I could have a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Thank you again. Order FY twenty-three dash zero three six, transfer order contractual settlement with, also with respect to the Bridgewater Public Library Staff Association. Mr. Dutton, please.
Not a whole lot to explain here, other than we, we're sort of negotiating in arrears, one year in arrear. So there's a prior year amount due, and then, and then obviously, current year, both. Sorry, it was in my place. In the tune of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. So again, I would encourage you to send this to Budget and Finance and Finance.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for referral to Budget, Finance, and Finance Committees. A vote, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seeing none. Thank you. Order FY twenty-three dash zero three-seven, Transfer Order Water Enterprise Fund. Once again, please, Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order to the tune of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It funds what I have been sort of discussing ever since the summer. The work that Environmental Partners, our engineer on water, water issues, has given us for a proposed scope, a comprehensive study of the town's water distribution system, water quality, and expected tie-in of additional well sites. And based on our early projections, I think a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is a very fair amount. But again, I would encourage referral to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. And I would entertain a motion for approval, a referral, I should say, to the Budget Finance and Finance Committees.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Aye, thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, I see none. Thank you. Ordinance, FY twenty-three dash zero zero-six, Proposed Bridgewater Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Adult Retirement Community and Planned Development District. This is brought forward by Consular Gallagher. Consular, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This proposed zoning ordinance amendment was brought tonight, and I, I don't want to miss the Consular Souza's, your name isn't on here. I think you and I agree we're going to introduce this. So I'll speak on this tonight briefly. I was asked with Consular Wood, Consular Souza, to put something forward for a developer who has some interest in doing a project down off of one oh four. And in order for that to go forward, there will need to be an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So I'm, I'm putting this forward to the council to send it to committee, to get that process going. Obviously, there's be a lot of give and take based on what I understand. However, tonight, due to several factors, I really do want to, I believe the proper term would be to postpone taking any action or postpone any referral tonight until our first meeting in January, and here's why. I asked, I know that our, our long-term Community and Economic Development Director is leaving, so I asked her to, if you could get the language before the council soon, so we can, you know, at least have it in front of us before she leaves, that would be helpful. Well, that has been done. Second, secondly, is, once something is referred to zoning, my understanding, they have sixty days to act on something. And due to the limited meetings that they're projected to, or not zoning, the planning board would have to chime in on this. Because of that, limited meetings over the next month or so, I was asked if possibly this could be moved to our first meeting in January as well, and that there'll be a lot of discussion and work once it gets referred to that committee, and to do it within a sixty-day window might be kind of tight. Thirdly, is obviously, the committee of the Community and Economic Development Committee will probably change when it, when the count, when the council has an election in January seventh. So I don't want to refer it to Planning Board at this juncture, because we have to go to the Planning Board and Community and Economic Development Committee of the council as a joint discussion. There will be some work that will need to be done in that committee, based on how it's proposed. There'll be a lot of give and take. I want this, I want that out, and I want this in, I want this out. So it's going to take some time. So I don't want to put that strain on them during the next month and a half. So it's before us, so I would ask that a proper motion would be to postpone taking any action on this until our first meeting in January, which really hasn't been set yet. I don't know when that. So that's my motion.
We have.
Second, a discussion?
All right, go right ahead.
Just to the, Mr. President, to Mr. Gallagher, obviously, based on the timing of the vote of January seventh, would it be more appropriate to maybe go to the second meeting of January? Because I believe, obviously, there's going to be reorganization of the council, plus new committees being formed. And again, there's could be some delays, so I'm just thinking timeframe-wise, maybe the second meeting at least.
I said, for, I don't know when we meet in January.
Right. I'm just thinking as far as timeframe aligned, at least going with the election, either the second meeting of, of January or the first meeting of February. I'm just, you know, it usually takes a meeting and two to get things.
And I'll amend, I'll certainly, I'll amend my motion to the second, to take this up at the second meeting in January, whenever that is.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Yes, Consular Moore.
Can I just ask a, maybe a process question? So when it does come back at that second meeting, we could at that point discuss the referral or any action in that meeting.
Yes, the, the goal would be at the second meeting in January would be, you know.
To get it to committee.
To get it to the, to the Community and Economic Development and Planning Board joint meeting.
They'll have to.
And then they'll have a lot of, they'll have some work to do where, you know, some of us might have some ideas or concerns, and those will certainly be brought up.
So you're, you're technically asking to postpone the first reading, really?
Correct.
Okay. Yep.
We have motion and a second, and if I could ask all those in favor to vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seeing none. Thank you. Petition, twenty-two-three dash zero one-two, Special Town Election Warrant. This matter has been before us and now is here to be considered this evening as a first reading. Mr. Dutton, do you have a comment to introduce this? I would entertain a motion. Motion for approval.
Moved to approve the special election on January seventh, twenty-two-three.
We have motion and a second. Discussion, Consular Moore?
Yeah, just a question. I think in our last council meeting, there was a question on what happens if it's, if it snows or there's a storm. I'd just be curious to know if we do know the answer to that.
Yeah, get your boots on and walk to the pole.
That's it. Sounds good.
I don't have my, my microphone on.
You show up and vote yourself in.
Yeah. Further discussion? Seeing none.
That answer was shovel and, and plow.
Official answer.
Yeah, I didn't have my microphone on. It probably wasn't picked up.
But this is the date.
I'm, I'm assuming you guys are just keeping this at the council level and voting it to the next meeting, so it can be finalized at the next meeting, where Mr. Wood will ask a question indefinitely.
No need for referral, we're just approving. All right. All right, all those in favor, just to keep it at the council level, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And citizen comments? I think the citizens are.
Cooking their turkey.
Otherwise, preoccupied this evening. We'll, we'll go to council comments, and I'll begin this evening, if I could, please, with Consular Wood.
Sure. I will start off with what I was only going to make as my only comment, which is Happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully, people enjoy their time with friends and family and, you know, have some great meals and watch some great football and that sort of thing. I, I forgot that the ballot question was on our first reading, so just point out that January seventh, snow, rain, whatever, the post office works, so do the voters, right? And, excuse me. I'm going to let everybody read the question themselves, and people have had a lot of questions about the question. It may be a little bit confusing to those that don't know that the state law allows an exception in the process, and our question is modeled after the state law. But I want to amend those, those comments by saying, it's, it's a bit disappointing now that I've seen a couple of presentations by representatives of the no-on-question-one, that they're presenting misleading information. And specifically, the misleading information is that the representatives are saying that the marijuana market in Massachusetts is unregulated, and that's absolutely not true. The retail market is regulated by nine thirty-five CMR five hundred, and the medical market is regulated by nine hundred, nine thirty-five CMR five oh one. That is state law. It run about a hundred and fifty pages. They cover regulations like cameras that need to be on the parking lot and on visible sites and inside the store. I believe one of our medical dispensaries has a hundred and fifty cameras on site. It covers security, how you get in the building, how you leave the building, what happens to the products within the building. It covers testing, which is not something that street-level marijuana needs to go through. It covers how much testing, how much product needs to be tested, when it needs to be tested, deswarpment. It covers background checks of the people that are involved in the process. It covers audits, so there's a seed-to-sale audit of everything that passes through those stores. It covers secret shoppers. These are shoppers that go into stores to make purchase or try to break the law and see what the store is going to do. The people that run the stores have a license to protect. They will not break the law. It's in their own best interest not to sell to under twenty-one, not to see fake IDs, not to try to be persuasive in, in what gets sold. They also have package labeling requirements, which brings to me to the second piece of misleading information. There's a presentation that I've seen that shows a picture of a Skittle-like box or a cereal-like box, and the present, the presenter tells the, the folks that that's what the packaging looks like. I will tell you that on page, gosh, now I forgot what page it is, it specifically talks about packaging, and that the packaging cannot resemble something that's in the market, cannot resemble something that's going to be attractive to youth, cannot resemble something that's already covered by food and beverage packaging, and cannot have bright colors that are attractive, and must have sealants and a couple of other things. And then finally, has to have certain labels placed on the packaging that tells you exactly what's in the packaging. And we talked about the levels of, in, in the, in the picture that I saw last night, it said five hundred milligrams, not in the state. So these things may occur in other states. It may occur in the, in the underground market, the black market. It does not happen in the regulated retail or medical dispensary market, and these presentations are very misleading to anyone that doesn't know what the law is or how it's applied to the retail market for, for marijuana use. And so it's, it's just very disappointing that the presentations are misleading to the people who are actually looking for facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular, Consular Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things tonight. First of all, I want to congratulate the candidates that did pull papers, that did get their signatures, and they will be on the ballot, and at least three of you sitting here will most likely win, unless there's a, a, a hard write-in against the three that are unopposed. And I know the race that Consular Perry is in, there's two other people for two seats, and obviously, Consular Souza and two others are not going to be running. So we will see three new councilors in January, unless there's absolutely no write-ins for the one that's vacant. But I am a little disappointed there wasn't more competition. I mean, you have eight seats available, eight seats available, and you have eight candidates, but one vacancy, one race. You know, I don't know what that says, but I'm glad that there won't be eight changes on the council, but I, I think I was hoping to see in, in a time when we've reconstructed our precincts, when we've realigned the districts and, and all that, that there would have been some more interest in getting more involved in the community. I mean, I, I won't be sitting up here forever. I don't think Consular Wood will be up here forever. None of us will be up here forever. It's good to have new blood and change from time to time. So we'll see what happens on January, January seventh. But on the ballot question, that will be for the voters, and, and any, any campaign, you have, you know, issues on both sides, yes, no, facts get distorted, information maybe not accurate, whatever side you're on. But the point that I want to bring out to the voters that come out to vote on this is they need to remember a couple of things. I do not support this going to the voters for many reasons, but the main reason why I did not support this and don't support this is because it's targeted. It's not an open process. It's earmarking retail marijuana licenses, if approved, to specific businesses. Any town that has done this has had an open process to allow applications to come in, in our case, to us, to review and approve those retail licenses. We're not going to have that opportunity. This is targeted. In some regards, people have said it's not, to me, they've said to me, this isn't fair. Why can't I open up a store if this is approved? It's not the way it's written. It's only allowing the current medical facilities to convert if they choose to. They may not choose to. But it does not open the process for a business, a minority business, if, a minority, if they wanted to open up a businesses, this is pretty direct and pretty targeted, and it's not a fair process. That's all. I had hoped that the question might have been just a blanket question to the voters, to say, you know, do you support the retail sale of marijuana, just like we did in twenty sixteen? Then we would, it would come back to the council, and we could, at that point, go through the process, if approved, of saying, okay, maybe we'll have three licenses. And, and, and the medical facilities on Downstreet certainly probably most likely would definitely be in the running for one of those licenses. There's no question about it, but this is just too specific. It's not an open process, and I don't think it's fair. And technically, there's still a ban, even if this is approved. It makes no sense. So that's, I just want that fact to get out there to people for January seventh, however they feel about this issue.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Moore?
And have a happy Thanksgiving. Now I'm done.
Thank you.
Just that way, I'll be quick. The same comment, just Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. In addition to football, it is also the World Cup, so some of us will be watching soccer as well. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Souza?
And I was going to speak about the marijuana issue, but since Dennis did such a complete job so well, I will just pass on it by telling you that I agree with everything he said. Okay? And I have been against it since day one. The other issue is, for a while there, I was called the tree guy, because I used to haunt about all the dead trees that were on the sides of the roads, and it took three years to get them removed. Then I started talking about the branches of the trees that came out over the sidewalks, and if the homeowners didn't cut the town trees, the people would go in the street to avoid the branches, and the trucks going down the road would actually be hitting the branches. Well, I don't know where this company came from, but they seem to have solved the problem in some parts of town, especially the one that I've been talking about, where the tractor-trailers in some cases and box trucks used to cross over the double line, so their boxes and stuff would not hit the branches of the trees. It's been taken care of, so that's a relief. And I want everyone to have a very happy Thanksgiving with your family.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Perry?
Thank you. As always, and like everyone else has wished everyone Happy Thanksgiving, I want to do the same. After Thanksgiving, for those that might be available and want to help, I just want to remind those that the Lions Club will be decorating the Common Saturday morning. We'll be there at nine o'clock, so if anyone wants to lend a hand, wants to come down to the Common and help as, 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 as much as we can, we'd be greatly appreciated. And I do believe the weather looks like, it was looked like rain originally, but now it looks like it's going to be the best day of the weekend, so hopefully, it'll be good to go for Saturday morning. Secondly, I want to wish the BR football team good luck tomorrow night. They'll be facing Brockton up at Fenway Park for their Thanksgiving Day game, but it's also for the league title. So obviously, an exciting location and a big game for the team, so I want to wish Coach Pacheco and the team a good luck tomorrow night. I'll be going as well to, to watch with my children and hopefully see us bring home a victory. on tomorrow night. I'll be going as well to, to watch with my children and hopefully see us bring home a victory. And that's it. So again, just have we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Consular. For myself, I certainly want to as well wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the holiday and be safe, of course, on the road. I want to thank Ms. McCauley for her appearance and presentation here this evening with respect to the, the tax factor. And once again, as always, your, your statistics are quite overwhelming. Present them very well, in understandable manner, I think, for us. Thank you very much for that. And I think I have nothing further to offer this evening. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion and, did I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Consular, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
So, Bill, December sixth?